All right. The police, right. Lieutenant, what do you call made some copies for me to...
No, this is the street sidewalk.
That's the side, that's the street sidewalk. That's the administration part.
Rather than having everybody grab, maybe we might just...
All right, so...
This is the street stuff that was sent out earlier, so... Several copies.
So everyone, yeah, grab a copy. So I'm gonna start right into the agenda while, while we're doing that. All right. First on the agenda is approval of minutes. We got those.
Yes, yes.
Approval of minutes.
The ward, the maps are going away now. There's one map of each ward. So just take your ward. Don't take what's on top.
Oh.
All right, you got that, right? Just take your own ward.
On these, just take your ward. It's not, not what's on top, okay?
And this is the whole show.
All right. So on the agenda, approval of minutes. We got the December 16th minutes and the January 6th minutes for approval tonight. Going into local laws introduced, local law A is Mr. Contis. You wanna just real quick, Richard? It's a technical correction.
Yeah, it's a technical correction, changing there from some control order.
Okay. Changing, correcting it. So the idea is to not send it to committee. It's just a technical correction, right? Does it have to age, Richard?
Yes.
So, okay, we'll do the intro and then let it age and then it'll pass. We'll pass it. For local law B, 2020, that's Ms. Fahey's. What I wanna do is you say a few quick things. I'll let Mr. Spencer have...
Oh terrific, okay.
Two, like two minutes, really.
So, all right, we'll quickly, you know, we passed the resolution to move forward, this is earlier last year, to the value of community choice aggregation. And so the city did move forward and interview several different administrators for the program and did make a decision on an administrator at the end of the year, signed a contract, and Mr. Spencer's here to talk a little bit more about that process and next steps.
Okay, so obviously the idea of the community choice aggregation is to aggregate all of the consumers within Albany and allow through our administrators to go negotiate better pricing on utilities. Also may include some additional green utilities or some energy efficiencies in terms of that. So really the next step is really putting out a plan in terms of the community engagement. That's really probably the most important part, is making sure that the community understands what's going on. They understand what the process is. They understand what their opt-out provisions are because it is an opt-out provision.
Could you hold on just a minute? I just want to make sure everybody again here is able to hear. This is important information.
So then again, I think the, the community engagement and the community education is the most important part. We're gonna be rolling that out with Mega with, or the administrator. And that's really letting the community know what this is, letting them understand how this is gonna help them, how it's gonna save money. But most importantly, that opportunity for them to opt out if they don't wanna be part of this and that they can opt out any, anytime. So we wanna make sure that everybody understands that. So moving forward, if the prices are a little bit different than what they're expecting, they're not gonna come back and blame the council or blame the city. So they understand what that is. So it's really, I've gotta pack it in here. There's a bunch of information here that you guys, I'm gonna give to you. You can make copies for the council. A lot of stuff based from NYSERTA on community aggregation, fact sheet. But also some information from Mega, some of their example documents and community engagement strategy. So this is also part of a larger sort of greener energies or greener communities from NYSERTA. To look at the high-impact actions that they talked about, benchmarking clean energy upgrades, LED streetlights, clean fleets, solarized. Most of these were done other than clean fleets. So community choice aggregation down in here. So this really fits in well with the high-impact choices that NYSERTA puts out there. So I'm gonna give that to you so you make copies of those.
Right, and I would ask that you hold your questions. There's gonna be a fuller discussion of this in the planning committee. It's going to planning. We just wanted to get this information out. There was a concern, Mrs. Fahey's part that. Not everyone attends all the meetings and she wanted all the members to be, to get a bit of information. And hopefully everyone participates in the planning committee meeting because this is important stuff.
Do we have that scheduled yet?
Yes, we do. That's February 12th is planning committee meeting. But also I wanna say this 60-day education period, this is when Mega Energy goes out and talks about this whole program to the community. So if you have neighborhood associations that are active and that, you know, would, it would benefit folks for, to have someone from Mega Energy come and talk about this program, please let myself know, let Louise Gavin know. She's the contact person with Mega Energy. And I think we've sent out some contact information. Also, please get the information out on social media. This, to me, is, can be a huge stumbling block because it's, it's, you know, there's a big learning curve here to understand what this means. And people have a lot of reservations about doing anything because they've seen when they've joined, looked at joining other ESCOs, Energy Service Corporation, the companies, there's, there's hidden fees. But this isn't like that. This is a New York State authorized program. So there's a lot of rules and regulations and it really, we all do stand to benefit from this. And there's other, there's, it's either 14 or 15 other municipalities are also exploring this and...
With the same company?
With the same company, Mega Energy. That was, you know, one of the, we looked at, we did interview three companies and this one stood out for the work that it's already done and for a lot of different reasons. But we looked carefully at all three administrators. So like I said, 15 other municipalities are looking at this and, and the more municipalities that agree to do this, it's gonna bring the price down. So we're, we're saving people money and we're, we're also gonna have more renewable energy sources, which is, you know, what we all want.
Does Mega create renewable energy sources or are they selling in the same market as National Grid competing for it?
That is correct, yes. Now you'll still have National Grid. National Grid will still be the ones to supply energy and to do all the maintenance. So your people will still be getting those National Grids. Absolutely. Just, and we try to schedule them in February, March.
Mr. Ball?
Do we have a copy of the contract and is this the final stage or is this the final stage? Or we will have another opportunity to approve the final contract?
We will need to pass specific legislation that Kathy is introducing tonight on community choice aggregation.
And then there's a second step where, you know, they're gonna come up with some prices and sources for energy. A lot of decision-making still has to, so we can still say no, we don't want any part of this, okay?
Right, last...
Will there be a web on the, the city's webpage? Will we have a link to explain it or anything like that?
Yes, yes. And there, there's a lot of information right now on megaCCA.org. But yes, we're gonna have more information on the city website. They're trying to do a lot more publicity as well.
Okay, so let's, I'd like to apologize for squeezing this in, but Ms. Fahey's concern led me to say, okay, let's, let's just get this information and speak on it. Did you wanna...
And I will, just a request for members. I think that it's wonderful, in fact, we talked about presenting things to the full council. Sometimes we can't all make committee, committee meetings. Something like this, it would've been great to actually be able to ask questions on as a full council. So if we could please try to keep all, we love to do informational things. It should be on a Wednesday. And if there's, if there's an emergency thing, fine, but on a whole, let's always focus on a Wednesday. If it's timely, we'll try to switch what's happening on that Wednesday. But in the future, let's really focus on Wednesdays. It's too short. It's not enough time.
We have more time and it's a lot of information to get out. So moving on from there to ordinance as hell, there are a number of them. I'll have Ms. Farrell just run through them because they're from the finance committee bombing, so just...
Yes, so we are going, so 20.101.19.
What's the number?
Yeah, agenda.
That's agenda, agenda number seven. That's a pass. That is for playground spray pad equipment installation. Agenda number eight is a pass. We amended that. That had been passed through the finance committee meeting at a lower rate. We did amend that ordinance to that lower rate.
So does that, the title doesn't reflect an amendment, so is that being amended tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a pass with amendment?
Correct. Talk about 22.101?
Yeah.
Correct.
So the $150,000 is, is the amount of the bond.
Agenda number nine is as amended as well. That is for the APD vehicles. That was brought down from 1.357 million to 1.205,500, which we've talked about how difficult that is to say in finance, but less money.
The bonds for the playground, I thought that was more.
Nope.
Nope.
Lincoln Park was $1 million. That might be what you're thinking of.
There's, there's different playground bonds. It wasn't just one playground bond.
Why do I think that was 225?
It is 2...
It is 2, no, it's 250.
It's 2... Oh, no, you're right. And...
I'm looking at 150 here and I thought it was...
The cost was 250, but the authorization was for 150.
I thought the bond was 250. I'm like 100% sure.
The agenda, yeah, the agenda.
The agenda says 250, but are...
The agenda says 150.
Yeah, 150. No, no, you're looking at, you're looking at agenda number eight.
I'm looking at seven. I know, this is the one I thought for, so this is my path.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it should be 250.
That was, that was, I bet you they mistakenly changed that with the, the change of the 150. So that...
Should be 250.
Yeah, so that was the same amount as the, thank you for catching that, because that is, that's supposed to be 250.
Wait, number seven?
Number seven.
Seven is supposed to be 250.
So do you have to amend that?
You know what, I have, I have an earlier...
I thought it was 225, no, 225. So we amended to 150.
No, you're thinking of the roadway striping. The roadway striping was 225. That was amended to 150. The playground equipment, we didn't touch.
Yeah, it should be 250.
That should be 250.
So do you have to amend that or...
Michelle, can I, can I ask before our meeting if you could print those out so I can just see what we have that we're authorizing at this point?
Okay.
Because like if there's been any mix-up, do you wanna know that in...
Okay. I didn't make any changes to agenda number seven, so I'll just look at the original and see what, one second.
If we didn't make any changes, you don't have to amend it or anything. You just, you just pass it.
Yeah. So we just have to make sure that we read the... Yeah, so it's gonna be on Danielle. So I... Agenda, agenda point 11 is moving, oh, sorry.
What about 90?
Sorry. So nine, no, that's the APD vehicles. I talked about that one. 10, we're going to be withdrawing that. That's for the APD building improvements. That didn't go through the proper channels. It didn't go through engineering or anything like that. So they're now doing that internally, going through the proper channels, making sure that they go through engineering and before directly coming to the council. So that will be a withdrawal. 11 is the Skyway project.
And was there language being inserted regarding John Raphael's change?
He sent the Algeme copy.
Okay, so that will be with amendment also then?
Yes, yep.
And also we're being reimbursed most of that for true?
Most of that, so we are being reimbursed 1.9 million out of that 3.3 million. And we're getting an additional, the total amount of, that the cost is going to be between, I think, 10 and 11 million dollars. So our total cost, I think, is 1.3 million out of it.
Okay.
Oh, right, yep, yep.
1.25 and then later another 100,000. And that's a pass.
Yes. Agenda point 12 is going to be withdrawn. There was money that, within engineering, that could be used for that one. And the next one is also going to be withdrawn for the same reason. Agenda 14 will be a pass. That's for the street reconstruction.
I'm just seeing this list tonight. I'm gonna pass it.
Yeah, and, and we, unfortunately, we have to pass the bonds before the end of January.
Why don't they, I mean, normally they get this stuff out to us in November and they chose to not get it out to us until today. So I, my heart doesn't pump.
Well, actually what they've done on this is they normally get it to us in January or February while we're considering the bonds. Usually we're passing the bonds in March or April, or February, March and April. So...
Well, but we're getting it today.
But we weren't told that we're gonna get it two weeks ago, two and a half.
We were actually told last, we were supposed to get it at the end of...
And my memory doesn't, doesn't fail me. In times past, we got it earlier, even in November.
Well, you had a time where you could have a committee discussion on it and it could be presented to you.
Yeah, and the one meeting we had with General Services back, back in June, we asked them to give us an early unveiling of this. And oh, yeah, uh-huh, yep, uh-huh, but it never happened.
Kelly, I have a question because when the vote came up for the pro temp and, you know, one of the questions that I had was about, I sit at these meetings and I hear that information is constantly requested and isn't given up. And we keep on, or put in situations where we're finding out something at the 12th hour and we have to vote on it. And right here, this is a little concerning for me because it's a map of a lot of red, right? And if you look at the streets that are gonna be taken care of in my ward, it's about 100 feet of street. But I'm sort of, I don't know.
Right, and what I would say to that is I agree with you. I've been after the administration about getting this. We were supposed to get it, there are probably two occasions where the date got moved. Again, if you don't feel comfortable voting or don't wanna vote, I mean...
And I will say, DJ, both Kelly and I have been requesting this incessantly. We agree with your frustration with this. We agree it's completely unacceptable. Where we are right now is, this is one of those difficult positions where, I agree, I don't like this and there is a huge part of me that would love to vote no on this, but there are so many streets that need to get paid. So we're in a difficult place where we need to have our bonding things passed by the end of the month. So...
We didn't clear out our challenges. Somebody else...
Absolutely.
How business is done. And you know what? It's like we get choked out because this right here is kind of a smack in the face. It ain't kind of a smack in the face. It's a total smack in the face.
I completely agree.
And you know, every time that we make, you know, I say something about it, it's just like, you know, oh, 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 oh. And you know, like all the calls that we get about the streets, you know...
As a council, we can make the choice to not pass this. I mean, that is absolutely our choice. We can make the choice to throw down and say this is completely unacceptable and we are choosing to not pass this. And if that's something you'd like to do, we can discuss it. But that's really the choice that we have.
With, with the administration, we made it clear that we, without this list, we weren't gonna pass it. It's, it's rather unfortunate that we're in the final hours. Real quickly.
Yeah, real quick. So first off, we are taking in the map, making portion of this, a large portion of this, sort of because we had heads and we had to cycle back through to see, that's a way to see the TC. We just cycle back through to see the TC to get the maps. But let me be clear, if the bond doesn't get approved tonight, we are at a serious risk that we don't end up having the contracts executed on at the time we end. And we will likely get higher bids than we would if we put the bonding out now or the bidding out now. And then we're at risk of cutting this list down. So I'm gonna put the ball in your court that if we wanna vote this down today, which I hope we don't.
I'll have to put the ball back in your court. Why do you put us in this situation? And I have another question. The, the last street data that I saw, this is 2017, where's the burn of that?
Right, right.
No, the actual report to CDT C does.
That was long.
My block, not that I have to get a microscopics and get the little dots on that. And I just finished, I guess.
Okay, no, we have both, but this is, the file is so big, I couldn't send it out.
I'm capable of sitting down and reading. And I think most of us are. We would look at the street numbers. But to think that we are capable of digesting this and we get it the night of in this microscopic little red spot data form is totally bizarre and it's a sloshing of information and it's not a good way to run business. And I don't want that. You throw all that and think, well, it's hard to, no.
So, so okay, at this point, thank you, Mr. Gallo, thank you, thank you. We're done. We're done. For members that don't feel comfortable or don't wish to vote on this...
What just happens all the time around here is people feel some type of way and he's able to sit here and point fingers and get people to cut other people off when I think that if he had, if he has something to say and, you know, if people feel uncomfortable about what's presented to us in the last second, people should be able to speak. And if we, you know, because we, we listen to everybody else talk.
I know, I agree. But I also, I believe that we need to start our meetings on time. The public comes to our meetings and we need to get our stuff together.
If it's gonna be voted down, then it's gonna be, there'll be plenty of time to talk about it. There'll be plenty of time.
We have started many meetings late because people had things to say. And we patiently, when other people talk, but when others talk, we get cut off. And it's not, it's not fair.
DJ, I don't think we should start our meetings late, ever. I think it's disrespectful to the public. I agree, but...
But what I'm saying to you is this is something that came from forth and people are clearly uncomfortable with it. And, and you know, to get told we're putting, you know, that if we don't do this, the bonds could be higher and things like, that's not fair.
It, it isn't fair, but what I would say to you is, vote, it's on the record, vote your conscience, vote.
Yeah.
You have a vote. Yes or no? You have control over that. I'm not trying to discount what everyone's saying.
I don't have one of these.
I agree. We should've had this before.
I got these, but I don't have the...
So our next agenda point.
You don't wanna correct the chart. So there, there is something that is listed as being in the 14th board that is actually in the...
I'm making copies.
But it's not a 14th. It is in the...
It's on the quarter of the ninth from the 10th. Right, so I just, thank you for relying on charts. If people oughta know, you know.
Okay, so next item on the agenda.
Agenda number 20.
What happened to the rest of them? You guys get sidetracked?
Yeah, those are being...
12, 13 are withdrawn, 14...
Withdrawn.
14 isn't withdrawn.
14 is the street. That's what we're just talking. That's council, those are all hold.
They're hold. 15, 16 and 17 are hold.
As well as 18 and 19.
18 and 19 is hold.
And 20 is a pass. Judy, do you wanna speak to that? There's an amendment to it.
Yes, so this is the ordinance from 2018 that was for 1.8 million basically. That was the, the funds have not been borrowed in the, as a bond. They can be danded. And they're being used for purposes other than which we approve them. Generally, they fall within the realm of equipment, which is what we authorize, but we did it, we authorized this amount of money based upon almost 1.2 million dollars being used for trash parts and recycling parts. And the administration's backed off plans to do a pilot, to be one of, or a pay as you grow. So they have been using the money for other purposes. My position is we should not be allowing one thing to have maybe, you know, 10, 20, 50,000 dollars left over, maybe 100,000 dollars left over because of overestimates. But when you completely change the purposes of a bond, it's appropriate for the administration to come back in and talk to council about that. In this particular case, the bonding authorization, PPU, is for 15 years and many of the purchases for which they proposed to use the funding are really periods of probable usefulness of five years would be more appropriate. So, and we are against our bonding limits. And so I was looking at this saying, let's have them come back into us with a flexible on these. So we have reduced this to what they have encumbered or spent already. Plus recognizing that the budget office led them to believe that they didn't need to come in for a special bonding appropriation. We have allowed basically about 280,000 dollars left in this, in this particular bond. And we're basically revoking our authorization for the balance. So they do have to come back into us and essentially ask permission to spend money on these things, especially because we're up against our debt limit. This is one way of rightsizing things rather than having them have like essentially another 800,000 dollars sitting there that they use as they choose without oversight by us. So that's the purpose of this. So we're reducing prior bonding authorization to 1,050,000 dollars.
And that'll be a pass. Onto resolutions introduced. First one, the reappointment of Ms. Jones to the parking authority. Will go to planning. Okay, the next one, 31220, by finance, resolution, the adjustment of salary in APD. It's gonna go to finance also. The 41220 is the Medicaid one by me. I'm gonna introduce it and hold it, so. Right, just hold it. It's gonna probably just end up going away. Well, they're still in the... Because we just heard back from the governor's office, there's some stuff going on with the budget.
The bill just came out today.
It doesn't reflect what's happening right now.
Right.
That's it.
That's good. All right. And lastly, 51220, considering the salary adjustments between the city of Albany and International Brotherhood. That's going to, it's a pass, right?
Yes.
Finance. And that's, that'll be a pass.
So what, what do they work for?
There's two folks...
There's two members and they work for, at the, at the landfill. Yeah. Yeah, it makes sense when you think about it.
So that's it for the agenda. Am I missing anything?
No, I just wanted to clarify on these. People, there are five different pieces of paper you should have. Of the two long ones, one is your ward map and the other one is the citywide map. I don't know who recovered, why I got everything, but it's a little confusing. So...
You'd like a giant poster wall at home? You gaze upon it lovingly every day?
I'd like to talk to people.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, with that... So, okay, with that, am I missing anything? Anything?
Kathy, when did you leave, where are you watching?
12.
All right, so motion adjourned, excuse me, meeting adjourned.
Sarah. I might not be here tonight. That's my birthday. Kids are taking me out.
The last time that I pulled out 20 minutes...